I call this Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First thing, before we begin tonight, Ms. Moxley, could you please lead us in a prayer? And Mr. Cotton, a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, Creator of all, thank you for giving us another day, for the warmth of the summer sun, and for the opportunity to be outside and enjoy Onslow County's natural beauty. Bless our community and all who are gathered here this evening. Dear Lord, you have graced the members of this Board of Commissioners with leadership and the ability to govern. Bestow upon them the wisdom, discernment, and knowledge they need tonight and in the days ahead as they work for the good of the county. Almighty God, in these days after celebrating our independence as a nation, help us all to be mindful of the sacrifices made by so many in our armed services who have given life or limb for the cause of freedom. Look with favor upon their families and friends and comfort those in grief and despair. Thank you for the commitment and dedication of our employees. Keep them safe on the job and give them wisdom in handling the demands of their jobs. Also strengthen for service our first responders and give them the stamina to be at their best when confronted with the absolute worst. And above all, give us the wisdom to count our blessings. Now, dear Lord, with deep respect for the faith traditions and beliefs of all who are gathered here, hear us in a moment of silence. Mr. David Cotton will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I'm not sure, but I believe we have some electeds from Holly Ridge, so thank you for coming in tonight. I would ask all that's in attendance, if you have not silenced your phone, please do so now. And I believe our sheriff is here, so thank you for coming. We hope to move right along with our agenda tonight. We have several appointments, and it may be lengthy, but we'll do the best we can to be as expedient as possible. We do afford the public two opportunities to speak. The first opportunity is for three minutes, and those comments must be reserved to items that are on the agenda. The second opportunity comes towards the end of the meeting. It'll be for five minutes, and at that time you can speak on any matter that the commissioners have authority over. There are some procedural policies that the board adheres to, so we ask that as you come forward, when your name is called, to please give your name and address, and then make all your comments to the board in its entirety. There will be no discussion with the audience during your presentation, and the board will reserve, if they desire, to respond at commissioners' comments. We do ask that you do not promote a candidacy or any business, and please keep your comments respectful. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. If all is in favor.
Some of us have moved.
All in favor of adopting the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Do I? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. At this time, it is the first opportunity for public comment. This is the three-minute period. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is the first public comment period. During this first public comment period, there's a three-minute time limit. In accordance with the board's rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. All the comments during this first public comment period must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items on for this evening's meeting during this first public comment session. The first individual signed up is the Honorable Carolyn Stanley of the town of Holly Ridge. Ms. Stanley references the Holly Ridge Liberty Fountain. Ms. Stanley, I do not believe that's on the agenda this evening. Would you wish to withdraw your name and sign up for the second public comment period?
Yes, please.
With Ms. Stanley having withdrawn her name, there are no other individuals signed up for the first public comment period, Madam Chair.
Okay. And then, would you like to proceed with general items?
Yes, ma'am. Item four, general items. There are multiple general items this evening. Many of them deal with consolidated human services, and so we'll ask various directors to come forward as we move through the agenda. Item A, receipt of home and community care block grant. This is an Onslow County Senior Services item. I'll ask Ms. Christine Kennett to come up for this item and stay for the additional senior services items. Ms. Kennett, please proceed.
Good evening. The first item that I have is the Home and Community Care Block Grant. Onslow County Senior Services is the lead agency for the home community care block grant services in Onslow County. We receive the grant yearly from the area agency on aging, and it provides funding for in-home services, adult daycare, transportation, and nutrition services. This year's total grant is $603,822, with a local match of $67,901, which has met with existing senior services operational budget appropriation, and no additional monies are required. We respectfully request the board approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign any documents on behalf of the county.
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Please continue, Ms. Christine.
Thank you. The second item is the senior transportation contract. Again, this contract is between Onslow County and the Onslow United Transit System Incorporated, and it facilitates transportation services to elderly clients age 60 and over. Clients are assessed on an annual basis for eligibility under guidelines of the Division of Aging and Adult Services. Onslow United Transit System Incorporated provides handicap-accessible transportation to medical appointments and to senior nutrition sites around the county. And the action requested is respectfully request the board approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign associated documents on behalf of the county.
Do I have a motion?
No.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Continue.
The last item I have is a senior nutrition caterer contract. This is with a new caterer. The contract is between Onslow County and Diamond Food Enterprises Incorporated for the delivery of prepared food for home-delivered meals to seniors and meals for all five nutrition sites, Jacksonville, Richland, Sneed's Ferry, Swansboro, and Belgrade. Nutrition services are provided to clients age 60 and over. They're assessed based on guidelines given to us by the Division of Adult Services and Aging. Again, I request that the board approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign associated documents on behalf of the county.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How much is that per meal?
That contract is for $258,859.
It's just a block. It's not broke down into?
Correct.
Now, Christine, we used to have a contract with a different provider. Is there a reason why we've changed providers? Was there an increase, or is that previous provider no longer doing this?
There's a few reasons. Each year, we have the ability to bid it out, and this year, we elected to based on We have, of course, more people to serve and the same or less amount of funds to do it with, and we also have had a few issues with our current caterer that we have tried to resolve over the past year, and it seems like we haven't gotten the resolution that we need, and it has caused us some issues at the senior center. But the biggest thing is the new contract is going to save us about $16,000 a year or allowed us to provide 2,968 more meals per year to our seniors.
Well, I'm glad that you're going to do this because this is so crucial to so many of our citizens, and oftentimes, this is the only meal that person gets all day, so I'm really glad you're staying on top of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Ween?
Yes, one question. And is this a local business owner?
This business owner is actually out of New Hanover County, Diamond Foods.
How many bids did we get from Onslow County?
We got three bids from Onslow County. One was our current provider, and the other one was over a dollar, around a dollar fifty more per meal than this provider, so.
Okay. All righty. If there's nothing more, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Christine.
The next three items are from the Department of Social Services, the first being the award of contract to Onslow United Transit Systems, Inc., for Work First, the second being contract to Onslow United Transit Systems, Inc., for Title 19 Medicaid Transportation, and the third, an energy programs outreach plan. Our DSS Director, Ms. Heidi Bauer, is here to explain all three. Ms. Bauer?
Thank you. The first contract is a contract between the OUTS system and the Onslow County Department of Social Services for transportation for our Work First clients. Work First is a mandated program that provides Work First family assistance as well as Medicaid. The Work First program transportation is a mandated service and is 100% county-funded. The request is that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign the contract and associated documents.
What's the board's pleasure?
Some move.
Okay. Any discussion? I will ask, if this is 100% county-funded, is this a budget item, or is this coming out of social services money?
This is in our budget for this year.
It's in your budget? Okay. No other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
The next contract is also between the OUTS system and the Department of Social Services. This provides transportation services to clients to and from medical appointments. These are Medicaid clients. Per state policy, North Carolina requires that we utilize the most cost-efficient means of transportation possible, and also that the agency providing that transportation meet very strict criteria for reimbursement. Medicaid transportation is 100% reimbursable through state and federal dollars. Respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign the contract and associated documents.
Move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
The energy programs outreach plan approval. Every year, we are required to write a plan that states how we plan to use the energy program money provided by the state. Those programs are used for needy families who have heating or cooling crises. The state requires that the outreach plan be signed off on by the Board for Social Services or the county commissioners. I respectfully request that the board approve the LIAP outreach plan and authorize the chairman to sign a letter of approval on behalf of the county.
What's the board's pleasure? Motion?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question, and that is, in reference to this, Heidi, how do we find out who in the community has these particular needs?
The clients actually come in and apply for services. We advertise when the program runs, and clients come in and apply for the services. We do an eligibility check, much like we do for any of the other income.
So there's no outreach that we do? It's a matter of them coming into the facility?
Our outreach is basically advertising, going to local communities, Salvation Army, such as that, letting them know when the funds are available, how much we have available, and what the requirements are for folks to come in and apply. We generally serve senior services, clients through senior services. We do a lot of going out into the community to take applications.
Okay. And I will just add, a few years back, I actually had a citizen that contacted me, and I referred them, and they were fortunate that they met all of the criteria and got air conditioning, and it's something that they would not have been able to have afforded without this program. So the program is definitely worthwhile. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Heidi.
Moving on to items G and H, another consolidated human services department, the Health Department. Item G, Health Department Propose Write-Offs for Fiscal Year 14 and 15 Followed by Receipt of Ebola Preparedness and Response Funding. Our Health Director, Ms. Angela Lee, is here to present those two items. Ms. Lee?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is a request approval to write off outstanding amounts owed by patients totaling $8,457.54, which have remained outstanding for equal to or greater than two years. The proposed write-off amounts are reflective of the balances after we've applied the sliding scale fee, and all insurance payments and adjustments have been posted. We respectfully request approval of the Health Department write-off request.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Angela, I'm just going to assume that we've exhausted every possibility to recoup this money.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have a system in place in regards to contacting our patients. We inform them when they come in. We have mailings every month, and it's not until after 15 months of trying to contact them where we've had no contact, they've not made a payment, that we actually then send them to NCDE at set off and try to recoup money, but we do everything possible and remind them each time that they come in, so we exhaust every avenue.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
All right. Our next item is Ebola Preparedness and Response Funding. During the last year, Ebola has significantly impacted Western Africa, and due to international travel, the United States also saw several cases. Because Onslow County residents travel internationally, we also want to ensure that our community is vigorous, and so we have had large response planning attempts in our community with our partners in regards to preparedness. The CDC released funding to the states to support their continued Ebola planning efforts, and Onslow County was awarded $20,000 in Ebola response funding. So we respectfully request acceptance of $20,000 Ebola response funding and adoption of the budget as proposed.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item I, Vehicle Maintenance Facility Construction. Dr. Megan Doyle, our Assistant County Manager, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure to come to you this evening with the contract, hopefully the contract, for the award of the vehicle maintenance facility. As you know, in February of 2014, you asked the manager to begin the process of planning for the replacement of our existing vehicle maintenance facility, which has, I think, outlasted its useful life. We have several vehicles that we take care of now that cannot be accommodated in our current facility. In addition, many of those vehicles also cannot be lifted to conduct the proper maintenance on them. As a result, we have, we began in 2014, April of 2014, with a reimbursement resolution to begin the process of investigating and beginning the construction. On the 18th of June 2015, we accepted bids for the vehicle maintenance facility. The bid tabulations indicated that quadrant construction was the lowest responsible bidder for this project at $3,481,116 to construct the facility. In addition to the construction contract, a copy of the certified bid tab is in your packets with you, and you can see where they ended up with the rest of the other bidding contractors. Just as a reminder, the vehicle maintenance facility will be financed out of two sources because the vehicle maintenance facility will be on the space where our current solid waste facility is located, and because a significant portion of the work of the vehicle maintenance facility does work on those large pieces of equipment at the solid waste, a portion of the financing or a portion of the funds, excuse me, will come from solid waste as well as from installment financing. Just to kind of allay any fears for the Board of Commissioners, this construction will be similar to that of the government center, which means that there will be one contractor who will bear all the responsibility for the construction of the facility. We'll have a separate architect who will be responsible for our design, and then our engineer who works for us to make sure that our interests are protected in every situation. With that said, we're hoping that construction won't last more than 365 days, so a full year, and we hope that construction will begin sometime in September. So at this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners award the single-prime construction contract in the amount of $3,481,116 to quadrant construction, which is actually a local company in Onslow County.
Move.
Okay, we got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, discussion?
The, one of the things that I wanted to bring forward is, and Jeff Smith's in the audience, I know he's there, how old is this building? Because I know the public would like to know that.
1973 is when it was constructed.
And the first thing that happened when Jeff came on staff was we found equipment that was dangerous to our employees, and Jeff took care of all that. And one of the key things, too, is that the ambulances cannot be lifted to its full height because it'll go through the ceiling of the old building.
Yes, sir.
That it's in. So it's a great thing for us to be able to move forward with this.
It's definitely a worthwhile project, and not a day too soon, so. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item J, easement for sewer Burton Business and Industrial Park. Ms. Leslie Moxley, our county attorney, is available to present this item. Ms. Moxley?
Thank you. Commissioners, last year, Onslow County entered into an agreement with the city of Jacksonville whereby the city would tear down the old tax office on Tallman Street downtown in Jacksonville if the county would grant the city an easement for a forced main, a forced sewer main through Burton Park. The city is now ready to tear down the old tax building and turn it into public parking, provided the county does, in fact, dedicate the easement to the city. The easement you have in front of you is a temporary construction easement along the line of the Northwest Corridor Boulevard. It does not allow for lateral connections, and then it extends beyond the property at the end of the Northwest Corridor Boulevard. The forced main on the street will be in the state right-of-way. Anwasa officials have looked at it and worked with the city of Jacksonville to make a determination that it will not interfere with the Anwasa lines and the existing lines in Burton Park. So this is before y'all to approve the easement to the city of Jacksonville pursuant to the agreement last year.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the easement for the city of Jacksonville through Burton Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes item four, rather, general items. Would you like to move to item five, appointments?
Yes, please, continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item five, appointments, the first appointment is to the Aging Planning Board. The Aging Planning Board consists of 18 members and is appointed by the Board of Commissioners for staggered three-year terms. The purpose of the board is to promote and improve well-being of senior citizens in Onslow County, to make recommendations, advise, and consult with the Board of Commissioners and the county manager on the funding and development of facilities, services, and programs to enhance the quality of life for older adults, and to coordinate and cooperate with other organizations and human service agencies to enrich the lives of the county's senior citizens. Ms. Julia Collins has expressed an interest in serving on the Aging Planning Board in seat number five and has provided a citizen participation application. There are no other individuals that have expressed an interest in serving at the time. The vacancy was advertised, and the application is on file, has been certified by the clerk's office. The specific action requested is to consider appointment of Ms. Julia Collins into seat number five for a remaining three-year term expiring on September 1, 2015.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 B, Library Board of Trustees. There are 10 members of the Library Board of Trustees who are each appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. At least one board member represents the following townships or constituencies: Jacksonville, Richland, Swansboro, White Oaks, Stump Sound, an active-duty military representative, a retired person representative, and a minority representative. Mr. Brian H. Jackson, minority representative's term expired on June 30, 2015. Mr. Jackson has expressed a desire to continue serving in his respective category and has provided a citizen participation application. The vacancy was advertised, the application's on file, and it's been certified, and the specific action requested is that the commissioners consider reappointment of Mr. Brian H. Jackson to the seat minority representative for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2018.
There are motion to appoint Mr. Jackson?
Move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Item C, Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. The Onslow County Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC, Board, is comprised of five board members appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Board members are appointed to serve on the Onslow County ABC Board for terms of three years and can serve for three consecutive terms. The Onslow County ABC Board employs a full-time system administrator who oversees the daily operations of the ABC system in Onslow County. The Onslow County ABC Board provides oversight related to the operation of the six ABC stores in Onslow County. Mr. Gary Dixon's term expired on June 30, 2015. Mr. Dixon has served three consecutive three-year terms and is ineligible to continue serving on this board. Mr. Thomas Greg Cooper has expressed an interest in serving on this board and has provided a citizen participation application for consideration. No other individuals expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancy was advertised, it's on file, and been certified by the clerk's office. In addition, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for appointing the chairman of the ABC Board annually. Mr. Gary Dixon was serving as chairman of the ABC Board. The ABC Board members have unanimously recommended that the Board of Commissioners appoint Ms. Carol McIntyre as chairman of the ABC Board for a one-year term to expire on June 30, 2016. The specific action requested is to consider the appointment of Mr. Thomas Greg Cooper to the ABC Board for a three-year term expiring on June 30, 2018, and Ms. Carol McIntyre as chairman of the ABC Board for a one-year term expiring on June 30, 2016.
Some move.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Item D, Onslow County Item D, Onslow County Jury Commission. The Onslow County Jury Commission consists of three members. One member of the commission shall be appointed by the senior resident Superior Court Judge, one member by the Clerk of Superior Court, and one member by the Board of County Commissioners. The appointees shall be qualified voters of the county and shall serve for two-year terms. Appointees may be reappointed to successive terms. Ms. Jo. B. Williams has expressed an interest in continuing her service as the Commissioner Representative and has provided a citizen participation application. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancy has been advertised, and the application's on file, has been certified by the clerk. The specific action requested is to consider reappointment of Ms. Jo. B. Williams for a two-year term expiring on June 30, 2017.
Move.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passage unanimously.
Item E, Onslow County Planning Board. Planning Board members are selected by expertise such as environmental or location of residence such as a particular township, in order to provide a board with broad balance. Mr. Marion Howard, Richland Township, and Ms. Marilyn Bunce, Home Builders Association Representatives' terms will expire on July 31, 2015. Both members have expressed an interest in serving their respective categories and have provided citizen participation applications. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The vacancies have been advertised, the applications are on file, and have been certified by the clerk. The specific action requested is consider the reappointment of Mr. Marion Howard for the Richland Township and Ms. Marilyn Bunce, Home Builders Association Representative, for a three-year term expiring July 31, 2018.
Move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passage unanimously.
Item F, Swansboro Board of Adjustment. The town of Swansboro has requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Walter Hancock on the Swansboro Board of Adjustment, serving as the extraterritorial jurisdiction alternate representative for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2018. Mr. Hancock has expressed an interest in serving and has provided a citizen participation application. The vacancy was advertised, the application's on file, has been certified. The specific action requested is consider the reappointment of Mr. Walter Hancock for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2018.
Do I have a motion for Mr. Hancock?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passage unanimously.
Item G, Holly Ridge Planning Board, Board of Adjustment. During the March 10, 2015, regular meeting of the Holly Ridge Town Council, the council took action creating a Holly Ridge Planning Board, Board of Adjustment. The combined boards shall consist of seven members. Two members shall be citizens of Onslow County who reside outside the corporate limits of the town of Holly Ridge but within the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Due to the changes of the boards, all the seats have to be reapplied for. The vacancy was advertised. Ms. Anna Gaskins, who served as the ETJ representative on the Holly Ridge Board of Adjustment, has expressed an interest in continuing her service and has provided a citizen participation application. The application's on file and has been certified by the clerk. The specific action requested is consider the appointment of Ms. Anna Gaskins to the Holly Ridge Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, for a one-year term expiring on April 28, 2016.
Move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of Ms. Gaskins say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passage unanimously.
Item H, Animal Services Advisory Committee. The advisory committee is composed of seven members appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners and serves at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. The advisory committee was created to advise the Onslow County Animal Services Director with respect to animal services matters. In conducting its business, the Animal Services Advisory Committee shall comply with all applicable North Carolina laws, including but not limited to open meeting laws and public record laws. On June 7, 2015, staff received a resignation letter from Ms. Gail Childress, serving in the citizen-at-large category. Ms. Toni O'Neill and Ms. Mary Ann Fasbender have expressed an interest in serving and have provided citizen participation applications. This vacancy has been advertised, the application's are on file, and have been certified by the clerk's office. For the board's convenience, staff has prepared a ballot for this appointment. The specific action requested is to consider appointment of Ms. Toni O'Neill or Ms. Mary Ann Fasbender in the citizen-at-large category for a remaining three-year term expiring May 16, 2017. If the Commissioners have completed your ballots, I'll collect them at this time.
While the manager is collecting the ballots, I'd like to advise the public, we use ballots when we have more than one applicant for one position. All the ballots are signed by the county commissioners and are available if the public would like to view them at the clerk's office.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have chosen Ms. Mary Ann Fasbender to serve as the citizen-at-large category for a remaining three-year term expiring 5/16/2017. I will give the ballots to the clerk immediately following the meeting. Item I, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Voting Delegate. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has requested each county to select a voting delegate for the annual conference. The delegate will cast Onslow County's vote during the 108th Annual Conference to be held August 20 through 23, 2015, in Pitt County, North Carolina. The NCACC requires a response from the county by August 7, 2015. Commissioner Williams has volunteered to be the Onslow County Voting Delegate at the NCACC Conference. The specific action requested is consider designating Commissioner Millionaire Williams as a voting delegate for Onslow County at the conference.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's yours. Passage unanimously.
Madam Chair, that concludes the appointments, item five.
Okay. At this time, we had no items pulled from the consent agenda, so we will move on to public comments. Mr. Manager, we have people signed up for the five-minute public comment.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Since the board has received several emails today and for the past few days, I'm going to ask the board's indulgence right now and to ask our attorney, Ms. Moxley, if she would give a definition just to help those public speakers that may be addressing the topic of a moratorium on building permits. So before we get into that, Ms. Moxley, would you explain the board's legal obligation as far as building permits and moratoriums?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The general statutes have put out a very specific requirement since 2005 in order to enact moratoria on building permits and other types of development permits that a county or a city could issue. A moratoria would have to be limited in duration. It could not be for general market conditions, and a moratoria has to be very, very specific because it does, during the duration of the moratorium, stop all development, which means that a property owner could not develop their property during that period of time. In order to put one in place, counties have to have a public hearing. The county development approvals that can be subject to it do include building permits except for the purpose of developing and adopting new or amended plans or ordinances as to residential uses. So to the extent we were talking about home building, there is a specific exception in the general statutes about that. Additionally, we would have to have a clear statement of the problems and conditions that required it. It would have to be limited in duration. Usually, we are talking about anywhere from 60 days to six months. It cannot be indefinite. It would have to have an express date of termination, or the county would have to start all over again with the findings of the requirement. It would generally be for something such as there's no sewer in place and the county needs time to put the sewer in, or we have no zoning at all in this area and we need time to develop a zoning ordinance. But it generally cannot be done to address general market conditions in the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moxley. So I hope if any of our people that are speaking to us tonight on public comment, if that is the topic, that that helps shed some light, because the board's policy is not to respond directly to comments. We will respond at Commissioner comments if we wish to do so. Continue with calling the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the second public comment period. During the second public comment period, there's a five-minute time limit. In accordance with the board's rules of procedure, Commissioners do reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period at the end of the agenda. Citizens shall have the opportunity to talk about any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners have control. The first name is David Williams of 109 Shadow Brook Drive, Jacksonville. Mr. Williams, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Ah, yes, hello again. David Williams, 109 Shadow Brook Drive. A few weeks ago, took my family, we went on a vacation, and it turned out to be really good, and we drove, and we drove through states like West Virginia, Ohio, Michigan, and went to Canada. And on the way back, we drove through states like Pennsylvania, Maryland, Virginia, and of course, North Carolina. We drove over 2,000 miles, okay? And during that trip, our GPS took us from small, two-lane roads in the mountains to eight-lane highways. We totally enjoyed the trip, but we were happy to get back home after a week to Onslow County. Now, the sad thing about it was how did I know I was home in Onslow County? For all along the way, when I wasn't really driving, my partners were driving, I would look at the highways. They were very clean. They were clean along the highways, they were clean in those two-lane roads, in the small towns we went through. Canada was beautiful. But in Onslow County, when you drive along Onslow County, there's litter everywhere. So I'm here to ask you, why is our county this way? Have we become so used to it that it doesn't matter that much anymore? Should we care about that? And is there a solution? I believe there is. I believe it's right here in this room. Leadership is a solution, which means the five of you. What do you want for our county? Many counties across our land seem to get the job done. Why can't we? For example, there's one highway I was driving along, I think it was Ohio, and I was looking, and I was like, wow, this roadway is really clean. They really take the effort to do it. And then, of course, you came across somebody, something had fallen out of somebody's vehicle, and there was a bunch of paper bags there, and it was really nasty for a short distance, you know? Those things seem to happen, but beyond that, it was clean. Four days later, when we came back, it was all cleaned up. There was no trash in there. So why can't we be that way? So can we find a way to clean our county up? Can we find a way to enforce rules better with fines, et cetera? Can we include our sheriff's department more? If they see somebody throwing something out or whatever, can we fine them? You know, give them an opportunity to pay $200, or maybe go pick up some trash along the highway? Let them think about it. Can we support our sheriff's department more to use more help from our local prisoners to clean up our local roadways? Is that possible? I've seen it happen in the past, but I haven't seen it too often these days. I think we can do it. Been part of things in the past. I know we can do it. I've seen people who never cared come out and they'll clean up when you bring it to their attention. As you say, you are in charge of this county, and I have full confidence that if you ask Mr. Hudson over there to find a solution to this problem, the job will get done, because he's very good at what he does. But it's up to the five of you. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Compared to what I saw, over 2,000 miles, we need to do something better, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Ms. Karen, and pardon me if I don't pronounce this correctly, Venema. Thank you. Ms. Karen Venema of 641 Parr Drive. You have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and thank you for your clarification, Ms. Moxley. I am here representing the group that has been emailing you the last couple days. The reason that we are emailing and doing this, kind of bombarding you with it, is because recently we've watched the land on Gum Branch, about 100 acres or so, give or take, being clear-cut to the ground, and we're very concerned about several reasons. The reasons, of course, is the housing, you addressed that. We're not here about moratorium, we're here about getting an updated land use study. I know that recently Sneed's Ferry just went through the same process, and there were very good results from that, and there was community participation, and that's what we're asking to have happen. We're concerned about the environment. We live in the country. We chose to live in the country. We like our pine trees. We like the deer. We like the wildlife. We like all that, and to watch that disappear for housing is heartbreaking. This is a beautiful community, and it's beautiful because it's pristine in its nature, and we're asking for the opportunity for you to just look again at ways of working with nature, ways of providing what we need to the community without destroying the beautiful landscape. We're also concerned about the traffic impacts. So with those things in mind, I ask you to please consider an updated land use study similar to the one done in Sneed's Ferry, and give us the opportunity to participate as citizens of Onslow County. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Ms. Carolyn Stanley of Holly Ridge. Ms. Stanley, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
I have a couple with me, then. Good evening, Ms. Aigner and fellow Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name's Carolyn Stanley. I'm councilwoman for the town of Holly Ridge. I trust you all received the information about our Liberty Fountain Park to honor all of our veterans in the five branches of our United States military. Our goal is to find a place of peace and quiet that our local families, as well as our visitors, can pause and honor their military loved ones and leave with the knowledge that we will never forget what our veterans have done and are still doing each and every day to protect and preserve the freedoms and rights we enjoy in this great country of ours. We are a very small group of volunteers working real hard to complete a big project. We have a lot of support from our local businesses, as well as individuals who have donated their time. In order to raise funds needed, we are in the process of selling bricks that will have a veteran's name and service information engraved on them to be placed around our fountain and below our flag display. In addition, we have sponsors for the 10 benches that will be placed along our walkway. To help us raise awareness for this very important project, I have spoken to the Sneed's Ferry Rotary Club, the South City Kiwanis, the local VFW Men and Women's Group, and anybody else that will listen to me. Jacksonville Daily News and Tulsa Advertiser has run articles for us to help spread the word on what we are doing, but we need monies donated to help us meet our goal for our completion date. We would like to have our dedication service on July 4 of 2016. As a councilwoman for Holly Ridge, I understand about budgets and that sometimes we have to cut things that we really don't want to. We're here tonight to ask you for a monetary donation as individuals or as a group. We will be most appreciative for any monies the county can give to help us finish this wonderful project to honor our veterans. If you or anyone you know are willing to help us fund this very meaningful project that I believe comes at a very critical time, you may order bricks or make donations by visiting our town website at townofhollyridge.net. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
If the board has any questions, I'll address them at Commissioner comments.
Okay, thank you. And my telephone number, if you have any questions after we leave tonight, is 910-545-0703.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes all of the individuals that have signed up for the second public comment period.
Very well. Thank you, and thank you. We enjoy having our citizens come and address us. At this time, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just two comments. First of all, I would like to publicly thank Dr. Doyle and two of our directors, Director Jeff Smith and Director Tony Paget, who have managed to get on the very back row of the room, as far away from the front as they possibly could, because they have been working very hard to save money- and to put together a project for our garage facility that will carry us into the future. We're not talking about a Taj Mahal, so to speak. It's a garage. I mean, it's a garage with lifts and that sort of thing. But it's one that meets all of the needs that we have for some of our larger service vehicles, such as our ambulance fleet and also the heavy equipment that we use out at the landfill. They've worked very hard to get that. And I believe that the bids that came in came in under the originally projected budget. And we're confident, Assistant Manager, that it will end up under the projected budget. So thank you very much, all of them. The second comment this evening actually is from public comment. Just one thing for the benefit of the public that might be watching on television. North Carolina General Statute 14-399 is the criminal penalties for littering in North Carolina highways. Onslow County itself does not maintain any highways. The state of North Carolina or municipalities maintain highways. And littering is a violation of state law that's enforceable by our law enforcement community. So the only time in which the Board of County Commissioners would weigh in on littering issues is not necessarily along the sides of the road, but rather, it's whether or not there's a particular public health issue. So for instance, if there is a home, which may be a roadfront home, and that home is accumulating trash, you know, all kinds of things that would attract rodents or create health hazards, at that time, the Onslow County Health Department or Planning and Zoning Enforcement officials would go into that property and would direct that it be cleaned up or cite the owners. And so on a case-by-case, property-by-property basis, yes, Onslow County is involved. And we have, in fact, been citing. In addition, we're also involved with illegal dumping. So sometimes we will find, especially on abandoned roads or backroads, somebody would go in and dump what appears to be a whole pickup truckload of garbage bags. Fair warning to anyone that does that, we are not above digging through trash. And we have, in fact, tracked down the owners of the trash through their phone bills and everything else that are left in the garbage. And we are very happy to pursue criminal citations against those individuals. So just a couple of additional clarifications about the maintenance of state roads and municipal roads. Madam Chair, that's all I have this evening for Commissioner Orosky. Managers comments.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for addressing the littering issue. At this time is commissioner comments. Mr. Bright, would you like to start tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have too much. I just thank all the folks that came tonight and spoke on the issues that you spoke for us to maybe look at or investigate, especially Ms. Stanley from Holly Ridge. Will surely take whatever you had to offer tonight and present in consideration and all the other speakers, especially David. We do a lot with Onslow County Clean County. The state goes out and picks up. They have different groups of people that adopt certain highways that get involved in picking up trash in their area. Maybe that would be something you might want to be interested in and, you know, leading a group of people and picking that trash up. Then the state comes along and picks it up for free. And you see these orange bags that's out there. That's the state program. But that's some programs that's used to address that. And I agree with you. Trash is just out of control up and down. Not just Onslow County. I see it everywhere. I don't know where you went, where it wasn't, but I see it everywhere. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and Mr. Williams, I would like to further the conversation with you when the meeting is over, just to find out, where are those specific areas? And I'm definitely one about the beautification of our county here. And it is very important to the image and the lifestyle in which we have here and our citizens. So I would engage in conversation to find out what specific areas... Because from your comments, I haven't seen all of what you have seen as you come forth this evening, but I would certainly engage in conversation with you. And thank you for the other citizens coming forth to speak as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Jarman?
Madam Chairman, I don't have much to say except I do hear the people out there tonight. And I don't know what we can do or so forth, but I understand their grievances. I really do. And I just don't know what to say. I just appreciate them coming and expressing their feeling.
Absolutely. Vice Chairman Buchanan?
I feel the same thing. Your concerns are a lot for myself. And we have tried to talk to several different people in the community, some of the developers. And we're still having some more talks with those developers, trying to figure out what can be done. But all five of us have the same concern about the community. I can tell you that. We have a lot of concerns for it. The biggest thing is all these foreclosures that we have really shakes us up quite a bit for our county. And we're really concerned about that. And David, the inmates are being used quite often. They're used on all state roads. You've seen them out there with those trailers that they pull around and the bus that they drive around. They do all state roads and they keep them pretty clean. And the inmates come in and do that. And I think the city also uses inmates to do some of the cleaning in the city. So everybody has that concern about trying to keep our community clean. So thank you for coming, and the rest of the speakers.
Thank you. Earlier today, excuse me, earlier today, I had a conversation with the county manager, having seen so many emails coming in from our citizens and having heard several citizens prior to this week, over the past year, as a matter of fact, as to the amount of building going on. And I have instructed the county manager to establish a housing summit early next month. And what I would like to hope is that we could get concerned citizens. We could get builders. We could get realtors. We could get all parties that are involved to come together and hear everyone's opinion as to what the future of Onslow County looks like. Our economy here in Onslow County is a very progressive economy. Right now, we have building. We have growth. And that is something that we in no means want to deter or dampen down. It is critical to employment, to keep people working. So perhaps, once we get all parties into a room at a summit and sit down and listen to concerns, perhaps we can find an avenue that will work. I'm very concerned about the clear cutting of property and destroying the trees. Density is an issue that can be addressed as far as zoning. So we just need to start looking and getting all interested parties at the table. And we hope that when we arrange that summit, that we will get citizens that will come and participate also. That will be something, Mr. Manager, that we can get started as soon as we can in the next month's scheduling. Ms. Stanley, I would like to say I commend you for your project in Holly Ridge. I'm thrilled to see that there's growth and things taking place in the Holly Ridge area. However, I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir here. Our budgeting availability of funds was very limited. And perhaps, if you would apply again next year, the amount of tourism money that we have, that we set aside, one portion of it is for capital projects, which yours would be. And the other portion is for festivals and events. So this year, you did not get funded. And I understand that that may cause you some hardship. However, there were several other good projects, equally as good as what yours is, that didn't get funded either. There just isn't enough money to do everybody's project. So we hope to still work with you. And maybe tonight, you being on the television will stimulate some interest in your project and help you along. That's about my only comments tonight. If there is anything further? Here nothing further. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.